We'd like to welcome everyone here tonight and appreciate you guys coming out. We've got a lot to go over tonight and we've got some recognition for some special people here tonight. But first of all, we'll go ahead and start the meeting as always with prayer and pledge. So let's get Commissioner Green to release her prayer and Commissioner Allison will do our pledge.
Let's pray. Father, we come to you this evening thankful, so thankful for your blessings and your mercies. Most of our forgiveness have sinned. Father, we thank you that you gave your son to die on a cross that we might have eternal life and we are so grateful. Father, we pray that we go a direction to see as we meet to do the business of the county, we pray that our decisions will benefit the people of this county. Father, we just pray for those that have gathered here with us, Father, that you would give them the blessings that they deserve in their families. Father, we pray that you would help us to continue to do that to please as you, Jesus Christ.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do I hear a motion to approve? Yes. Motion safe discussion. All the members say aye. Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda for tonight?
I move second. Mr. Chairman, there are a couple of items. First of all, if you look around the room, there are quite a few uniformed folks. At your request, we probably, there's no letter before A, but the full item may add recognition of law enforcement. Also had a request from both the chair and vice chair to add a letter to be sent to Truist in regards to closing the branch in Old Ford. The chair and vice chair requested that. And then another item requested to add since you received this is information related to the old pilot plant related interest there. So I could do the letter and the pilot plan that are added items or just do that instead of adding letters. It might be easier.
Yeah, let's do that.
I'll amend my motion to add recognition for law enforcement before A under appointments.
Okay.
And I'll need a second.
Motion and second. Any other discussions? All the members say aye. Okay. So we'll move right into that and I'd like to say first of all, on behalf of myself and our board, we appreciate the work that law enforcement does in this county and in this state. We're very fortunate to have the qualified men and women that we have to represent us out there on the streets and on the highways every day that help to keep us safe. And we certainly, from the bottom of our hearts, appreciate the hard work that you guys do. And I'd like to start out by recognizing you guys individually. First of all, we'd like for Sheriff Rick McKinnon to stand with his group of deputies and introduce each one of those and let us recognize you guys. Well, over here to my far left Deputy Jordan Frisby. Frisby is assigned to our patrol division. We've got Lieutenant Greg Stevenson who is the first line supervisor for our support division, which also covers your deputy that's here in for these meetings as well, Lee McKinnon. We appreciate him and what he does. I've also got our patrol captain, Jason Grinstaff, who's here as well. So that's who I've got from my group. Thank you very much. We have a little letter of appreciation we want to give to you.
It's an honor to be commissioner in this county. When I first came on, I was talking to our county manager about world-class and law enforcement. I've had direct involvement with some law enforcement with my job in supporting me and my position and my job. I've had personal situations with sheriff's department, helping me out with my family. I've had EMS. We are blessed in McDowell County to have world-class leadership and help in these departments. And I just want to say thank you.
Okay, we'll go ahead. We'll present these letters of appreciation all together. So let's go ahead and recognize each department before we come out of that. Next one, we'll recognize our Marion Police Department. We've got Alan this night. So Alan, if you would, stand up and introduce anybody you have with you or if you're alone.
Well, thank you first of all for the opportunity to come join you guys tonight and for the recognition. It certainly means a lot. But with us tonight, I have part of my command staff, which is Lieutenant Rusty Jenkins. He's our investigations commander and Lieutenant Jamie Harkle, who's our patrol commander. So again, just thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Do you have a wish or a comment?
I can't sit here without saying something. I spent 19 years with the sheriff's office in McDowell County. You're my family. You're near and dear to my heart. Spent a lot of time with Marion PD and with the highway patrol, working different cases. A lot of folks don't understand what you carry home at times. And I just have to say that we pray for you every day at our house and we appreciate the job that you do. We appreciate the partnerships that McDowell County has between the different agencies. It's not a matter of whose turf it is. It's just we're going to get the job done. That's the way it's always been and I expect that in McDowell County it will always be that way. And we appreciate it and that's what sets you apart from everybody across this country. Thank you.
And next we have, is there anyone here from Old Ford Police Department? We didn't get anybody here.
They're meeting right now.
Oh, are they?
Sure.
Well, we want to say that we appreciate the Old Ford Police Department as well. Next, but certainly not least, if you're North Carolina Highway Patrol and we're excited to have those guys here with us tonight. We certainly appreciate the hard work that you do. Jason, would you stand up and introduce?
Yes, sir. First, I want to thank you also for inviting us tonight. Most importantly, I want to thank you for your prayers for us. It certainly means a lot. Last year, we had, the highway patrol had a rough year. We lost one in Rutford County. So I really appreciate the prayers. With me tonight, I've got Brian McDaniel. Brian's been with law enforcement for several years. He was with Marion PD prior to coming on the highway patrol. He was at Shelby for seven years and I've been with him for two years in Rutford County and he just recently came back to McDowell County. So I want to welcome him to McDowell County. I appreciate everything you all do.
Okay, thank you. Again, we want to say we appreciate. Let's give all these guys a hand. If you would, we'd like for you guys to come up and let us present these certificates to you and get our picture taken with you. It's our honor. Okay, one, two, three. Well, I wanted to introduce our folks, but I also want to take the time also to make sure that you all know how much I appreciate this is a partnership. This is a strong partnership. It's not just the ones in uniform and it's not about the uniform colors or the different agencies that we represent. We've all got the same goal. We want to make McDowell County as safe and North Carolina as safe as possible. And we cannot do that just with us alone. We've got many partners and I see them in the highway patrol. I'm not going to name all the agencies. There are so many state, local, federal agencies that we work with on a daily basis and they support us and we support them. And Commissioner Green, to your point, you're absolutely correct. As long as I'm sheriff, it will always be that way. We will always support each other and we can't do what we do without the support of you, the commissioners. And I feel like we have always had that support. With my father, with the sheriff's office, you guys have always supported us, listened to our requests, listened to our needs, and I appreciate that. I want you to know that, current and former. Ms. Brenda appreciates you and all you've done. And I also would hate to leave without recognizing our new public information officer from the sheriff's office. Ms. Dejan Valeni is in the back and she's with us as well. William, the EMS, man, you guys are lifesavers, literally lifesavers to the citizens and those that are working out in public, but to us as well. So I always feel better seeing you guys show up when any of my folks are hurt or whether that's my family. So again, we cannot do this alone and I appreciate the support from all of those that back us here in McDowell County. I think it's not about Republican, it's not about Democrat. It's about getting the job done, doing it right, doing it fair. And that's what we do. And our men and women put our lives on the line every day. It's a war here at home too and we fight it. They raised their hand and they volunteered to come do it and I appreciate that. It's an honor to work with the men and women of McDowell County Sheriff's Office. Thank you all. Okay, next on the agenda, under the components, item A, property reevaluation update. And we've got Ms. Andy Wobbe and Tim Kean here. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Sheriff. I'm going to be quick. This is the first time we've really had an opportunity to address this board since the, I think, second quarter of last year. So I wanted to give you an indication of where we're at because we've got notices that are looking to be released probably by the end of this month. Preliminary results based on the revow since 2019 supports an overall increase of all property types by approximately 40%. All sales through December 31st of last year have now been reviewed and reconciled to ensure accuracy and to make sure that they reflect the most recent sales. Our line in the sand is January 1 of this year and so we wanted to make sure that every sale up until that point was reviewed and was reconciled into valuing the properties within the system. As a comparison, Mitchell County went through revow last year. Burke and Catawba, close to us, are going through revow this year. All are at 50% or above. Burke is at 40%. Mitchell, last year was at 55%. As for notifications, notifications as indicated, we anticipate by the end of this month. When we talked in the second quarter of last year, we'd actually talked about doing it in December, but because of the market changes and because of the interest rate changes, we made the decision to go ahead and make sure we have the most accurate information possible available to us. And that's why we've gotten going out a little bit later than initially planned. All right. When the notifications go out, there'll be 30 days allowed for informal appeals. Informal appeals take place before the Board of Equalization and Review is convened in April. There'll be several avenues available to taxpayers to appeal informally, including mail-in. We're going to have an online application, email, walk-in at 6 East Court, phone for appointments. And essentially what we're going to do is we're going to have informal appeals starting 10 days after the mailing. We'll also do those in person. We'll do those on the phone. And for people that are out of state or more comfortable, we'll also be using Zoom and an online avenue to do that so we can still be face-to-face with taxpayers. The findings and changes resulting from the informal appeals, we mailed out by the end of March so we can get those back into folks' hands before the formal Board of Equalization and Review, which starts again in April. And we'll also make certain that information and applications for deferrals, exceptions, and other tax relief programs are liable to the taxpayers as they come in for that process. Are there any questions?
What is the exact date that the notices will be mailed?
We're looking for January 31st. We do have an issue with our vendor right now. That's the only reason I'm kind of couching that, but we're aiming for January 31st.
What's the value base as of today?
I don't have that. It's TR-1, so it's available on the county side, but the 40% is based on that base. So.
Another question? Another question? Okay, thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item B, under the components. We've got a very special lady here tonight that we want to recognize. And I think she's going around running down trying to find a substitute, but we'd like to recognize tonight Mrs. Brenda Von. Brenda served on Board of Commissioners the past four years and just a little four years and done a great job. We certainly, I think I'm speaking for all the board, we appreciate the hard work that she's done, the input that she had into this board and making decisions, making the right decisions that we, as we see them. And we appreciate all of her hard work and dedication and she was always willing to take on the extra load if we had something extra we needed done. She was always there willing to take on that extra load and we certainly, by all means, appreciate all of her hard work and dedication that she has given to this county in the past four years. And I'll let the commissioners say the words, they will.
Mr. Chairman, I do want to say thank you to Brenda. It was an honor to serve on the board with you for the six years you were here, Brenda. And one thing, back to us, as chairman, as Tom Puff in my mind, you're always so positive and you always tried to find a solution that would be in the best benefit of all parties involved. So we know you love your family. We know you have a son and you bring him up to here today. And so we just wish you very best and it was an honor to serve with you.
It was amazing when I got voted in. You welcomed, I think, both of us, me and Chris, in with open arms and was always very supportive of us. And if you had any questions, I'll look down any way I can and it was a very good working relationship with you and I greatly appreciate the time that we've had.
Brenda, it was an honor to serve with you and a lot of conversations we've had over the last couple of years and we definitely have been blessed being part of the board. Just appreciate everything that you offered to me as a new commissioner and I appreciate your service to the sheriff's department as well. That doesn't need to be forgotten, but I appreciate your friendship more than anything.
Brenda and I go back a long ways. She helped break me in at the sheriff's office when I first started working there. She worked in the jail. We've had some good times together, working together. I just wish that Washington DC could go through an election like me and Brenda did. Brenda is my sister in Christ, most of all. And we prayed about the election and through the whole process, we told each other, no matter which way it goes, we're going to be okay with it. Brenda works hard at whatever she does. As some have already said, she tries to find a solution that will benefit all parties involved. And she's the same every time we see her. She don't change. She's always been that way, honest and above board with everything she does. And it's always, Brenda, been an honor and a privilege to work with you. And I'd say that we're going to continue to work.
I feel a little bit responsible for Brenda. Yeah, I feel a little bit responsible for Brenda being on the board because I think I was the main culprit that talked her into that, wasn't it, Brenda?
Yes, you are.
So anyway, Brenda's, I consider her a dear friend and we love you, Brenda, and we'll always love you. We appreciate all you've done for her. And also, we've got our ex-clerk to the board here. She has been a very special person to us as well and we're happy to see her with us. You're with us tonight to come and celebrate your, Ms. Sigmund Black. And so we welcome Sheriff Mitchell. We appreciate her, all the work that she's done and I know that you loved her dearly while you were on board and so that friendship lasts forever. But anyway, if you will, Brenda, come out and we'll have a present more, present you with this card.
I'd like to say that I appreciate the county. I appreciate the board, appreciate county manager, appreciate Sheriff. Service to this county is my passion. It don't matter if it goes to Quip, Oakley, or the bathroom, if you ask the sheriff. Whatever we can do to improve our county is what each one of us needs to be about because in improving our county, we improve the life of those that's already older than me and I'm not proud of that, I'm just going back here, or the younger ones. And I appreciate all of them, all of the services, how they work together. They never ever come to a call and say, huh, that's you, sir, huh, that's mine. I appreciate all of it and I appreciate being allowed to serve this county.
This plaque says, "McDowell County, North Carolina SEAL." It says, "Presented to Brenda Von in recognition and appreciation for four years of outstanding and dedicated service to McDowell County. McDowell County Board of Commissioners, 2018, 2022. McDowell County Board of Commissioners, this the ninth day of January 2023."
Thank you.
It's Sheriff her. You serve as Sheriff.
That's one.
She. Sheriff is a part of measuring all of us, I'm sure, especially me because I feel like I've had water and she may be swimming.
Three, two, one. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate all of them. You better be right off the hat.
That's all we want. And let me say also, we forgot to mention a very important person that played a big role in her being the commissioner, is her husband, BJ. We appreciate you standing behind her through these up and down years that we had and I know there was a lot of nice that you would have rather seen her at home than sitting up here in this boardroom trying to figure out things for the county, but we appreciate your support to her during this time.
Mr. Chairman, she has some other family members. Would it be all right if she and her license was shared with the night?
Go ahead.
This is my youngest son, Greg. My oldest son works for the sheriff's office, known as Joey, his name is Bobby Javon Jr., but everybody knows him as Joey. Then immediately to his right is Tiffany and then Ashley, his twin daughters, who will celebrate a birthday this month.
All right. Okay. Moving along now to item C. We've got a very special person here tonight that we're going to introduce. So I'll turn this over to Mr. Williams.
Sure, just a quick intro before Ms. Sigmund comes up. So as we all know, we lost a big presence in our county back in the summer being Lisa Srouse as the DSS director. And the board at that time didn't want to rush into the hiring decision. We looked, you looked at some options based on staff's input and a certain interim role as we worked through, you know, what y'all wanted to have in the director, really. And so it gave us some time, the staff as well as you as board, to really just, you know, take our time as far as applications and interviews and not rush into something that you will come to regret. And so after a pretty lengthy process, several rounds of interviews, great candidates and very difficult interviews, I'd say, especially for the candidates, you made a pick. That person is Bobby Sigmund, who was appointed officially several weeks ago. The date of last Wednesday, so about four days into the role. She had a challenging first couple of days. If she wants to maybe touch on that, maybe not, but it's been an interesting, typical DSS director kind of the first few days, I would say, having just lived it a little bit. So she's already been a great fit, been in the staff meetings and a lot of engagement already. So from staff's perspective, you guys did a great job in hiring and appointing Ms. Sigmund and I know she'll do well in the role, so.
Ms. Sigmund, would you like to say a word?
First, I want to thank you, to every one of you, for the faith that you've put in me to do this job. I will not let you down. We have hit the ground running, so to speak. We started on Wednesday and we have not stopped, but that's okay because that's what needed to be done. So we've started with the staff and the supervisors and asking them what's working well right now and what changes we need to make and how we're going to do that. And we've started with a little bit, a tip of the iceberg, so to speak, and we've started making some small changes already. We've found some part-time positions that have not been filled yet to get some help in there. We've posted those positions. We've posted the other positions. We've got interviews going and we've got interviews going for the manager position and we've already started that process. Then we're proceeding with some other small issues that we can take care of right off the bat, technology issues, replacing some laptops, other struggles that they were having. And then some other issues we're working on, long-term things, and we're going to continue those discussions. those discussions every week. And we've set up those meetings, we've set up other meetings and we've set up state reg meetings. So, we're proceeding down that road. And, you know, I've talked with the staff and let them know that this is not a, you know, one week we're gonna fix all the issues that we've seen, but we're gonna, the small issues, we're gonna, we're gonna fix those relatively quickly. The larger issues, it might be a month, it might be two months, it might be six, it might be a year before we see a big change. And they seem to be very understanding of that. They, they see my door open and they're starting to come by and say, hi, or have a great day, or have a nice weekend, or hey, I've got this problem, what do you think about this? And so, we're getting that traffic coming through and we're starting to sit back. So, it's starting to turn around and, and we're gonna just keep chipping away at it. But I appreciate the faith and I too love service and so, I was very moved by to hear all this. I also appreciate the law enforcement partnerships that we have in this community, so I can't wait to fill on that.
I can say, well, we are certainly happy to welcome you to our team and whenever we interviewed you, I'll never forget, and I think all the commissioners agree on this, the sense of positive energy that you've had and the dedication you have to your job and to the, we sensed that you were a positive person as well and that was important to us and so, and you certainly had qualifications, we were searching for it and so, we're looking forward to a long, you know, upcoming.
Mr. Chairman, I do want to welcome Bobby to our staff and we look at the great things out of your department and we know you're doing outstanding job and you were very impressive during the interview process and, and we like, we like the fact that you're going in there and asking them what, what's the problems. I mean, that's very important as a leader to understand your people and what, what issues they have. So, I want to say as commissioner, I appreciate you going in and one of the first things you did was bring your supervisors in and say, what, what's going on, what, how can I help you and how can I be a part of the solution, let's fix the problem and move forward. So, we back you, our board hires you, we're standing behind you, you got excellent county manager that is gonna be your direct supervisor and you reach out to him and to the board as needed, but we are here in support of you and your excellence.
That was my very first question, I got there at eight twenty-five Wednesday morning and at eight-thirty we were having that meeting. Thank you.
I just want to say, I look forward to the monthly meetings, I look forward to building a relationship. I understand a lot makes you tick and whatever issues are needed to make that, make DSS better, it, you know, we're gonna make it, we're gonna grow with you. So, you got our support.
Thank you so much. Love you.
I was not part of the initial interviews and the selection of hiring you, but when you were here before, I welcomed you and I still do and I believe I told you then that we are here to support you. We want to make the transition as easy as possible on you and for the betterment of the folks that work for you. So, we're here for you if you need us, you can yell.
Welcome to McDowell County and we're here to support you and whatever your needs are, make sure you bring them to the board.
Okay, thanks Bobby. Looking forward to working with you over the next many years. Next on the agenda, we have a D, which is the new EMS program. We've got Uncle William Keller, who is in town, so we welcome William to the podium.
Mr. Chairman and board, county manager, it's my privilege tonight to be able to recognize staff that has worked on a special program that we've implemented at EMS. I think when you look at the history of this agency that was started in nineteen seventy-seven, it's got a long history of having strong partnerships with community agencies, much like the sheriff spoke about, Commissioner Herring. But it's also got a long-running history of being a leader in rural pre-hospital emergency medical care and delivering, as Mr. or Commissioner Ellis said, world-class emergency care. It's important for the citizens and visitors of this county to understand, you do not have to live or visit Wade County to receive world-class emergency medical care. Rural counties can do it. We've showed that we can do it for many, many years through the backing of the Board of Commissioners, backing EMS, with equipment purchases, investing in our personnel. And today, it's a, it's my, I'm excited and it's a privilege to announce that we have added blood products to the McDowell EMS operation. Prior to this, if a citizen or visitor in this county needed blood, there was one location in this county where they could receive that and that was at McDowell Hospital. We run over ten thousand calls a year at EMS, over two thousand calls with our community paramedics, and overall nearly thirteen thousand calls. And in those, there's gonna be multiple people in twelve months that are gonna need blood products. If you look back at the history of our agency, we have led in the emergency, rural emergency medical care by implementation of twelve lead EKGs to get people to the heart center during a heart attack. Therapeutic Kylothomy in two thousand eight, we were one of one hundred agencies in the nation at the time to implement therapeutic Kylothomy for cardiac arrest patients. We've added ventilators that you would find just like in a mission hospital ICU, we've added surgical criques for merged airways, automatic CPR devices, known as the Lucas device, and now another historic milestone will be recorded as the administration of blood products come online in December of twenty twenty-two. This process to get it to the release took months, maybe even over a year.
Close to a year.
Close to a year. Led by Deputy Director Adrian Jones and staff, Training Officer Brenda Grady, oh, come on up, and Captain Marvin Hancock, serving as the assistants. They've brought this to fruition. Quality assurance process is in place, the safety protocol is in place, and the efficiency of this program is in place as we utilize grant funding for the startup costs and a partnership with UNC Health Blue Ridge to where the cost is provided to EMS for zero dollars. The efficiency aspect of it is also in place as we are not wasting blood as it is near expiration. It goes back and we receive fresh supply and they utilize the supply that we had to keep from it expiring and not being utilized. So, from an efficiency standpoint, we've brought it full circle. I want Adrian or the Deputy Director to come up and kind of brief you a little more on some behind-the-scenes work that they did to bring this project, what the training involved and how it's gonna benefit the patients that we see here that come here.
Hey, commissioners, I can certainly appreciate the opportunity to share this with you. It's been a long time coming and certainly we're excited. I want to give you just a brief scenario because I think it really pulls it into perspective of how an everyday call, how this project can impact these patients. So, EMS is dispatched to a patient who has called due to a fall from a tree. On EMS arrival, the patient presents with a deformed swollen thigh indicating a possible broken femur. The patient's heart rate's elevated, their blood pressure's low and they're pale and sweaty. They present with confusion and their mental status continues to worsen. Prior to blood, EMS would splint the leg, apply spinal immobilization and immediately load the patient and depart urgently to the nearest trauma center. While en route, we would start IVs, administer fluid to raise the blood pressure to a safe level, continue assessments and provide needed interventions such as pain management. The patient arrives at the trauma center where blood is administered and surgery is performed to repair the femur fracture. On average, the time from an incident occurring until we arrive at the trauma center is one hour or less. That is the golden hour, that's our goal. In spite of extenuating circumstances, that is the average. In this one hour, a single bag of blood could mean the difference between life and death, greatly changing the outcome for a patient. So, I think a lot of people may say, well, why hasn't EMS carried blood before this? And Will touched on some of that. Cold storage has to be maintained with no room for error. Blood cannot exceed six degrees Celsius, it cannot drop below two degrees Celsius. It has to be maintained at exactly that. Coilers with technology to maintain this temperature now exist whereas before that may have not been an option for EMS. We also have the ability to monitor the temperature at that line with Wi-Fi connected temperature sensors that will alert our supervisors if we're exceeding or getting near that temperature. It was also, again, as Will said, difficult for us to carry blood due to the short shelf life. It's difficult for us to buy a bag and know that we're gonna use it in that twenty-one day timeframe. And so, we may have had to waste units if not administer them at the time and not only from a cost perspective, but from a waste perspective. Y'all see the alerts coming from all these blood banks needing blood, so it's very important that we don't waste what we are supplied with. UNC Morganton or UNC Blue Ridge and Morganton has been a phenomenal partner making this treatment available in the region. They've partnered with a few other agencies in the region as well. We were fortunate to be one of the first to get this online. Not only do they supply the cooler and the temperature sensor, they're also providing us with the units of blood and we are exchanging those as needed. I am very proud to say that within a week of receiving that first bag of blood, we were able to administer that to a patient who had life-threatening hemorrhaging and had a really great outcome. And again, I also have to mention our team has worked tirelessly to ensure that we're ready to carry and administer blood. Captain Marvin Hancock worked for weeks on making sure that our refrigerators were validated, that the cooler was maintaining temperature, that the phone system was working and communicating on the Wi-Fi system. And Captain Brenda Gray has done a phenomenal job ensuring that our staff has all the necessary training to provide the best care because it takes everyone on the team, having ownership, attention to detail and training to provide this type of care. It doesn't just happen. And we're excited to be able to inform the Board of Commissioners of such a monumental program in EMS at McDowell, so thank you.
Thank you. It's very exciting to meet you here, so we're very pleased to see the direction you're going with that. That is monumental. Live there, so we're very excited for that.
Out of a hundred counties in North Carolina, how many counties do this now that, I know it'd be different in the big city counties probably, but in rural counties now?
I know of three that are operational and three that are in process outside of us and only one in the western part of the state.
Mr. Chairman, I do want to say that since I've been a commissioner on this board, William Keller and his staff have just, they're so far ahead of anybody, any other race, in my opinion, based upon what you guys report to us. They're light years ahead in my opinion. And if anybody's going to have a medical event, we hope people stay safe and they're healthy, but if you're gonna have an event, it's a good place to have one in McDowell County because these men and women, that, to me, they're almost like doctors. I mean, the knowledge and the training, Mr. Chairman, they have to go and the dedication and their commitment and just training, I mean, just training hours y'all put in. We're just glad that we have a chance to support you and your staff, William and Marvin and y'all. We just, we play a little role in a, in a big thing y'all are doing. And, and, Mr. Chairman, I do want to say, we say thank you on behalf of McDowell County and all our citizens. You know, you're saving lives every day and, you know, that's, you know, money can buy a lot of things, but money ain't buy a lot. And you guys went there, making a difference.
They have invested in me two different times and I will never be able to show enough gratitude for what they have done for me.
There have been several crisis things that have happened across the country and even outside of the country that folks from our EMS have been deployed to. And I jokingly tell William all the time that you can go on these deployments, but don't think about going anywhere permanent. We appreciate him and your staff that much. I've worked with all four of yous on many occasions and I just as soon have you as a doctor and I appreciate you so much.
One question, what would a cold, what does a cold storage unit cost if you had to buy?
It'd probably range anywhere from three hundred to a thousand dollars depending on the technology.
Do we have those on every truck at the base or how do y'all?
So, the supervisor vehicle, the QR vehicle, they're carrying the blood and they're responding, usually with the critical incident already, they're already dispatched, but if a crew decided they needed blood, they would call for them to intercept with it. So, we're currently carrying one bag, one unit of blood on their vehicle. And a unit of blood is between two hundred and fifty and three hundred dollars per unit.
Is UNC Blue Ridge the only partner we have thus far?
Thus far.
Good comments. Thank you very much, William, thank you. Appreciate the work all you guys do. Next on our agenda tonight, we're performing a D, it's the Recreation Center project. We have Patrick Kurt here with us, so Patrick, we'll turn the floor over to you.
Yeah, just wanted to give y'all some, some updates on the project. It's not, it's not ready to go out yet, but we are, we are making great strides in it. Take a moment. There have been some, some alterations as, as we get further and the, and the project evolves, going back and forth with, with Ashley and Chad. We've added some things and then, of course, we're in constant communication with the, the pool designer, the pool consultant and civil. And so, with throughout the, throughout the whole process, everybody, you kind of learn things, you see things that you want to add, you want to correct. And then also, it's not a big site, but it's, it is a complex site for anybody that's ever been out there. There's a lot of, a lot of terrain in a little area. And so, you know, it's very civil-intensive, miles right, awesome civil engineer, him and his team that are working hard at it. And, and I've got just a few, a few big points to kind of point out. This is the site, this is an updated rendering of the site. And since the last time you would have seen this, we now have, we're now kind of in conversations with the church adjacent to the property about how a tie-in would look like. Right now, you do kind of have a few, it's a dead end up into the site and there's a knoll right here. And I think there's, there's been some concerns about maybe people kind of in those woods sometimes and so, and then also from a, from an emergency standpoint, EMS and fire trucks, you know, they don't really like dead ends. So, if we could, if we could get a thoroughfare through there, you know, that'd be a great thing. And so, again, we're in conversations with the church as to making that happen. I think that our landscape architect, well, no, no, I'm sorry, Chad, I think is, is meeting with them, maybe even this week to, to further that along, but, but it is in progress. Also, this retaining wall, the, from the, from the floor, from the floor level of the pool, pool deck up to right there where my laser is, is an eighteen-foot grade change. That's, that's pretty significant. So, there will have to be a retaining wall right there, a, a significant retaining wall. And that, and there, the church's building right here is located about approximately six feet off that property line, so it's pretty tight. And we're gonna, what we're planning on doing is putting this retaining wall ten feet onto McDowell Rex property. And so, you get, you have about sixteen feet between the building and the start of the retaining wall. But as they dig in and you have to kind of dig, dig more away than, than what's eventually gonna be there when you put up a retaining wall. And so, that's, that's just another component that we, we want to take to the church and let them look at over. And they'll probably have to take it to, to their session. But, but again, everything's, everything's been, been good so far, so those conversations are being had. I'm gonna zoom in on a couple of little areas as I go through this. The big part of, well, let me back up real quick. The, so you, existing area right here is formerly tennis courts, now skate park. We are planning to do a larger parking lot there. What you, and I, when I give you this number, this is not taking into account your baseball parking, the new parking for baseball, but you, you have thirty-seven parking spots down here right now and we're, we're looking to have sixty-one at the end of the project. So, you're gonna be gang twenty-four spots.
Just on that list, right? And adding addition on the top there?
So, there's twenty-four right here, or they're gonna gang twenty-four. And I'll have to get you that number. I should, I should have wrote that down when I was walking, when I was going through this, but, but much more parking. this, but, but much more parking than what they have. And in this area, you can't really tell if it's, if it's really striped that well, so it, we'd, I'd kind of have to go up there and get a guess.
Over 100, okay.
Oh, yeah, definitely over 100 on the, on the, on the campus, I guess, all said and done. A few more things that we'll want to discuss with the church and with the county is, is a gate, is there a need for a gate there? Or is everybody all right with it being open and having, having this open thoroughfare through the, through the property? It's just, we want to kind of gauge everybody's interest as to if that's needed or not. So here's the press box area, and of course, there's the, there's the parking lot. This will, this will probably take a, it will take a small retaining wall, nothing like the larger one down here, but you have the, this new press box area with, I'm going to jump down the engine. So, so these are the architectural drawings for the press box area. We have male and female restroom places located on either side. One thing that we did add was a family toilet area, a shared toilet area with changing stations within that, adjacent to right over here. You have a small concession area, and then, of course, the press box area that looks out onto the field. The finished floor elevation for the press box is 18 feet high, higher than the ground of the, of the baseball field, softball field, so pretty extensive. You have really good views looking down onto that field. And this lower tier would be approximately four feet off the floor, so you have a great, you have a change in elevation from the bottom to the top of 14 feet, say, you see? And the plan is for all that to be covered. And we can look at a couple of alternates if, if we did need to clip off a little bit, we can definitely certain, we can work that out in the, in the bid process. But the, but again, the, the plan is for all this to be covered in the base bid. The, the field itself, planning on having a drainable turf field, it's approximately 74,000 square feet, 289, approximately 289 feet to the, to the center field, which isn't that long. I'm not a baseball player, so I probably couldn't get it out of there, but I've heard many of stories of baseballs crossing over the road and stuff. So the plan is to have, you know, the foul ball poles, the light poles, and the light poles will actually be poles for the net system too. And that net, net system, we're, we're looking at doing 50-foot tall nets, to various off. All the, all the chain link fence would be black vinyl coated with a, with a topper, just really state-of-the-art system, you know, nothing, as a municipality, nothing like this would, would be anywhere around here. Also, a big point I want to make is ADA accessibility to the top and to the bottom. We would have handicap parking up at the top, behind the press box and down at the bottom, but all these walks, you know, even given, given the challenging terrain throughout the site, all these walks would still be ADA compliant. The, the pool, Tammy Ellis with H2O Aquatics, she's been working hard. I'm going to show you a couple of options that we presented to the county, and I think the, the, I think the thought is that we would, when, when this goes to bid, we would put these out here and as, almost like an alternate to where we get to see the line item and kind of pick and choose at that point. But, yeah, she's been working diligently, her and her team, on the pool area. Also, out here in center field is a restroom area that would be close proximity to the food truck area. That food truck area hasn't changed, we're, we're going to have three stops for food trucks with the pedestals, providing them with power and water out there. And then I'm going to show you all these floor plans. So that, that's the restroom building in the outfield. Again, a family toilet with the men and women's restrooms on either side. And then the, the pump run's pretty straightforward, it's, you know, it's not, it is what it is. One good thing that, in talking with Chad and his team and the Aquatics consultant, is the Department of Health, whenever you have two different pools, it, it requires two different pump systems. What she's worked out is to have the pool and the splash pad area all in, all in one pool, so it requires one pump room, one pump system. So there's, there's a good bit of savings there. And when you look at this plan, there's, there's a few options on here that, again, they're going to be line items, so we can kind of see what they cost, what their value is, doesn't necessarily mean that we would have to take those. The, the pool area, the swimming pool area, six lanes, 25-yard competition pool with the starting locks, and then the, it would be lit, would have lights in it, it would have the flag system, everything that you could, you'd need to host a meet. Off to the L is the splash pad component right here, and this pool is set up to, for spectator seating, pretty much on, pretty much all the way around, except for where it connects to that splash pad. And, and then two lifeguards could man this pool and run it. The, right here in the center, we, we're thinking of having a bucket system, five bucket splash pad kind of dump area with a, a small umbrella slash mushroom-type frame. Then over here to the side, some small double slides that, that, you know, top, this will be for your toddlers, and they come out onto that little padded area that's submerged in the water. And this, this picture, if you can see, is very similar to what she's proposing. And so the trough system right there ends, but it will continue to slop up, so, you know, your, your 12-month-olds kind of just sit right there with mommy and not necessarily be in the water, but it's kind of, it's a wet area. And then out here in the, in the probably six-inch deep water, some, some water gutters, some water cannons, and some water tunnels. You can see the, the water shooting up out of the ground right there. And again, these are, these are all options that can be taken, will get a line item. My, my 12-year-old self would be jumping, jumping up for this slide. Now, you know, I, I used to be a lifeguard, and I guess thinking about what Chad has to do and manage it, we'll have, we'll have that as a line item, but I could see how that might be a headache. Any questions?
So on your standing seating, is there going to be bleachers? I know the, the new gym at the Old Ford School, elementary school, they have the nice, where you sit in there for the concourse to you. How's, what kind of seating are you proposing for the stadium?
So planning on that being slab-on-grade concrete tiered, and we would like, we would love to do, show chair vacs everywhere. Bad thing about chair vacs is they eventually have to be replaced, and they're, and they're not that cheap. So, but you could always come in with the aluminum bleacher on top of the concrete slab, and that'll, that allows, you know, some people are bigger than others, that allows people to scoot in or kind of spread out, and you're not, you're not rigid, and that's your seat, that's where you got to stay. Right here, this is going to hold more than 450 people is what, is what it's looking like. So a lot of seating, a lot of seating, but that's the plan right now. And, and that's an easy, that's an easy thing that we could do an ad alternate to, if we want to say, look, what would it take to do chair vacs everywhere?
Thank you. Phil, can you give us a date?
We're, we're pushing hard as the number one priority in our office. Again, it's very civil-intensive, so I think Miles and his team, or they're still looking to be done and ready to go to bid probably sometime early March, but we're, we're pushing on.
Well, Patrick, if you do it in, or mid-Febuary, that'd be big for us.
What time?
The sooner it gets, nothing better off.
I know, I know.
Quick to go to bid, that's what we're at.
I know, I know.
McDowell County, we, we support your firm a bit.
Yep, yep, I appreciate it. Absolutely.
Is there going to be any outfield seating, terraces areas?
Yeah, so there's, there's four, there's four planned viewing areas, there, 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 and there. And then we also have some areas showing that you could back a truck in and have some tailgating areas. And in the back of this restroom, the roof, the trusses, they can leave are over the wall a significant amount to where you could actually set up some long tiers and actually do cover behind that restroom building as well.
So capacity could go over, on a busy?
But, but, when I say 450, that's just in the, there's, you have, you have slopes, hills on, on either side, so, yeah, he, a lot of people, because they could be around that field.
Patrick, I really do like the design of your county. One issue we've had is when people go in there, now, they go up the hill, and then there's vehicles that park right beside the sidewalk, knock the spot, and then you've got basketball season, you've got gymnastics going on, and, and it's a miracle, I told Chad this meantime, I said, we gotta have somebody get, some child be backed over, ran over, that kind of thing. So I love the, the fact that you're going in one way, and then you've got the option with the cooperation of the church. And I do, I do want to say, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate the, appreciate the church coming to the table and sitting down with, with staff and with Patrick's firm to try to work out something that could be beneficial to them and us also. And, you know, as that church may need additional parking at times, that, that could be used by the church for additional parking at times up in there, because we want to be very friendly to those partners that, that are in this project with us. But the EMS going in and out and that building going in one way, out the other way, is very, very good, very, very good.
You could just imagine if the fire truck had a pool up there and couldn't hold it, it'd be an nightmare.
Thank you, Patrick, for your time. We appreciate you. We like you a lot. Also, I'd like to take this opportunity, so we appreciate the partnership, Richard, Chad Marshing, you've done a great job. They're saying we're running out of energy, and we're proud to have you. Thank you, guys. Thank you. Next, we move to old business, and I'd like to go over business, build a project, Mr. Williams, if you'd like, so.
Sure, thank you. I'll, if I go too fast, just throw the hand, stop me, but I'll try to go through as quickly as I can here. Just to hit the highlights of what you've got in front of you, we do have a lot going on in addition to that project, maybe even some not listed, but the services building, most people still call it the old administration building, or even the basement of the courthouse, is a 60 East Court Street. We've been working for a couple of months with the architecture firm, CBSA, on some baseline drawings of the existing floor plan that we have right now. So that's been done. We met with probation parole staff in early December. They, a few days ago, it was the holidays and everything going on with Christmas, they sent me on the 4th sort of their programmatic, programmatic needs. So like most other state agency, they have like administrative code, an additional building code that regulates the size of their offices. It's a minimum 100 square foot office for a regular officer, and quite a few of the offices are 80 square feet, so that's something we'll have to look at architect. So we're going through that with them right now. Old EMS station across the street, it's on Garden Street, stay on the street for a while. Did talk to Mr. Riddle, Public Services Director. We're doing remediation on that building within the next week or two, he said today. And once that is done, the flag pole will be removed and the transformer is part of the final effort there by whatever contractors hire. So the two components we're going to retain in the building. We're going to try to sell maybe the steel frame, if not, it'll be, it'll be done.
The flag pole, what's going to be?
We're going to store it for, for future use in another county facility, and if it's determined not to be used, there has been some interest expressed there from different folks in the community, so.
Yeah, it should make sure the contractor doesn't just throw away that.
I, I think I've said that enough to Mr. Riddle, he understands we're not to let that go on the track.
It needs to be stored for future use.
Absolutely. Going back across the road on Garden Street, the parking lot there has been paved, the lines have been laid out, and the last part that needs to be addressed is landscaping, so we talked to Mr. Riddle on that today, and he has some quotes coming in to, to dress it up for what can be done in January, and then we'll do some plantings closer to spring. Should make it look nice.
And one question.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Williams, I know you've moved the pavement, so as the board identified, we still have the three projects, as spring comes back around, that one being Sugar Hill side, the two mentioned, that's first top priority on that list, right?
That's right, we have, those marching orders, design work will have to happen, especially on the drainage, we have a couple of community center sites, one in specific, Sugar Hill, but it's almost more of a drainage issue to be addressed, and the paving might be the easiest part, the drainage, then the paving. Most of the rest, it's just a straight-up grind and pave job. The mental health building comes to mind, but everything is fine about it except for the paving, so it just needs to be started over. But that, we're in the early stages of that. We did get the, the pavement assessment plan that has, we've been waiting on to help with some of our other decisions in future years. We did receive that today. And I'll touch on the BSS building. Sigman did not touch on the physical condition or the utilization of our current building, but that is a concern of you as well as staff. And so you have previously selected the architecture firm, Little, to do essentially space needs analysis first, and then recommend some, some solutions there on building. They will be in town tomorrow afternoon. It's just a kind of a walkthrough, see what we've got, understand who the people are and what we're dealing with, so anxious to get that conversation started tomorrow. We'll be in touch with that. I'll get a highlight of that meeting on our meeting on the 23rd with you.
Okay. All right, then moving on, next, Mr. Water System Project, Mr. Williams.
Sure, we actually have updated this memo after it had been put together. We had received it, and actually, it's out of date already. So go through here, Phase 1, which is of our Nevo Water System Expansion, which is around 126, then the Gimpsey Road, Jack Wharton, and those areas. We have received state sign-off on our plans, so we are just doing a last pass through the plans as staff, Mr. Williams and staff, just to make sure we didn't miss anything. We're pretty much ready to go out to bid on that within the next couple of weeks, so that's very exciting, over a year of design for that, which sounds like it is a long time, but it's a massive amount of linear feed and line, just to keep that in mind. Phase 2 of that Nevo Water System Expansion, which again, is coming westward back towards the city and area, Warhol Park Road on Number 10 of that area. That's only an early surveying right now, so that, that's going to be a little bit later. And dates to keep in mind for this, both of those phases, these are, are both funded by the state, so it's state funds funded through American Rescue Plan Act. And so we do have some, some hard-to-lines set up by Congress in that, so we're moving as fast as we can on those and others we'll talk about after engineering.
When do you expect those ones to be complete?
Believe they gave, it's been a while since we talked construction, but that project, I think, was about a 12-month project, and usually that's as absolute long as you would want to go, and you wouldn't want it shorter than nine or 10 months.
Have conversations started at, sorry? Have conversations already started happening with the citizens if they want to tie in?
Not yet, as far as our one-on-one communication, before we go out to bid, in the midst of the construction bidding, we'll do sort of a door-to-door, a door-hanger-type campaign, saying, here, this is what's happening, you've seen surveying, they've read these reports, and, but we'll do the day-to-day, really just to make sure they know what's going on. really just to make sure they know what's going on. If they have a concern with the contractor, they can call our office, our staff, our engineer, but also give them information early on about connection. Usually when they see the work happening, if they're interested, they're calling us before they even can get to that point. We have some folks that already have, but as we get closer, we know we'll get more phone calls. But we'll make sure, learn this 20 years ago, you've got to stay in front of construction issues. Usually the engineer is really good, especially Miguel, to go behind the contractor and stay on top of things. Things happen, and so we don't want to have discordant homeowners as much as possible.
Would you give our outset on the Sugar Hill?
Yes, sir, I'll get to that. So you're asking about customers?
Yeah, potential customer base, people we might get back with.
I think in this area, it's around 300 to 400 potential home sites, and usually we see, if they're interested, usually about a quarter of that tile right away, and then over time it starts to increase as, you know, well health fails and things like that. So I'll just go through quickly the next few items here on our other projects. We had received a grant several months ago to run a line in the Hoppy Tom Hollow, anticipate a bid date scheduled for 2024. So again, we're, that's just getting started in the design, and that's gonna take a long time. We do have an engineering contract that needs to be approved for that, with Miguel.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion we approve the engineering contract, yes, Mr. Wood?
Yes. Motion second, you have discussion. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
You put.
Thank you. I was asked today about the next item, the ARC grant. We applied for, I was married four, five, six months ago, to extend water around Exit 90. So we've been at Exit 90 in Nevo for probably eight or 10 years, but this project would allow to branch off in that area to serve some businesses and some homes and a church or two. We received notification, I think Thursday or Friday, from the ARC office here, which is the governor, that he has recommended it be funded by federal government. And so there's always a first time, but, you know, 99 times out of 100, once you're recommended by the governor, it's gonna be funded by the federal government. So that'll take a little bit of time, work through the process, and then there's engineer selection, and then, you know, that, it's drawn out, but it takes a long time, so we try to be upfront with anybody, especially you as a board, but also public. These projects take a tremendous amount of time from initial interest to the revenue cutting, and I've lost a lot of hair between, you know, the start and end to a lot of them, but it just takes a lot of time and a lot of patience. So some folks have been bringing bad situations for a while, and they're very patient. So we're thankful for patience, but I can understand why. Wes Marion was asked about by the chairman today, seems like a lot has just happened today, it is. Received a draft of the water study that you had requested several months ago. I've literally just looked at it on my phone or my desktop just for about five minutes. And so the idea of doing that was that would help us to receive additional grant funds if necessary, like the ARC pre-application that we filed several months ago. We were invited to apply for that, so if you notice a pattern, you do a pre-application, you apply, and then if you're lucky, you would make it to the next stage. We were, early on, we thought that was a $1 million grant. Due to the interest in this round, ARC did lower it to a $500,000 grant. So that does change the dynamics a little bit as it relates to that project potentially. So we're gonna keep plugging away with the application documents, and we're continuing to look at other funding options in that area. So it's gonna take some time, but we're gonna keep working on it.
On medication documents, does it help that you're wanting to extend this to school, to a voluntary fire department, and possibly a church?
I think it gives us, I'll call it bonus points, the ARC is so much these days focused on primarily businesses. They really do appreciate that it's gonna serve eventually a school and eventually a fire substation, but if you can show serving business, especially if they're gonna do some retention or creation of jobs, that's really where they're, I think, maybe that's coming from a congressional directive, where they're having to stay on business. Everything else is, that's fantastic. And we've heard that almost literally from them, that it doesn't hurt that, you know. Other grants, at times there have been grants that have been specifically to extend water to schools. There are none right now, yet, but that could be an opportunity. Like if this funding only gets it so far, we don't have enough funding from other sources to do it, having that potential against a school, it's a pretty big, pretty big deal for them. And we do have the last item, we do have one of the water grant that's pending. I think the February award is when we're anticipating that for around NC 126 in Nevo. That's all I have here.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Next, decide to save the broadband update. Go ahead, Mr. Wood.
I wish I had more news to share on broadband, like we were breaking ground tomorrow or something. I did get some, so just a quick reminder, Spectrum, which is the dominant broadband here in the county, of course, they received a $4 million grant several months ago. The county is going to provide it, actually Spectrum's request, a little over $100,000 in match towards that project. You had allocated up to $1 million of our fund, so you have about 900,000 left for future grant opportunities, specifically to complete and access the broadband grant. Still waiting for that to be announced as far as the program parameters. They've done some preliminary information, enough to where we understand that unlike the great grant with Cav, it's gonna be more so the state and the county have a partnering together to identify areas of need. We haven't yet, I haven't yet, but we are gonna contact Connect McDowell for this, specifically with this grant, because this one is probably gonna require some focus, more so than the great one did. So we really need folks like this Connect McDowell that have been kind of living in the space a while, to help kind of zero in where they're hearing maybe more directly than even we are. But we'll do that, we'll also talk to the carriers, you know, the Spectrums and Optimums and others, maybe where they see some areas too. So there will be an RFP process that you will be in charge of, and we'll make sure that it's all open, and we have to, and that every company out there has an opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Next, on the new business, the audit overview. Can you get off on that?
Yes, sir. Most of this is updates. It wasn't usual on the timing of the audit presentation. Usually that is done at the, I call it the night meeting, the big meeting. Due to some delays outside of our control, the audit was presented at our third Monday meeting, December 19th. And so that has been submitted to the local government commission in Raleigh. Just a few observations from staff, from Ms. Bell and myself, that we want to just convey to you from that discussion and from our impressions. Again, as stated, the local government commission has set a recommended minimum of 20% for fund balance available for counties in our population range. You've heard the 8% fund balance as a minimum, probably your entire time with the board, regardless of how long you've been here. Contrary to popular belief, that's actually not a rule, it's not a statute, it's just, it's a preference set up by the local government commission, just as this is. So this, they can state their preference by resolution or however, and it's still a pretty good idea to follow, even if it's not state statute. So thankfully, this year, our fund balance has grown to a little over 23% for the year that ended June 30th. The prior year, it was 20.64%, so a little over 2.5%. So great positive direction from where it was around 15% a couple of years ago. And some people say, why was it 15%? If you recall, if you go down a few blocks, there's a pretty major renovation project that happened in the courthouse. The board at that time directed that, quite a bit of that project being paid for out of fund balance, which it did affect our fund balance percentage to some degree. And so since that time, we have been rebuilding it back. So that was a good investment of funds, and that's the point of having a healthy fund balance for one-time products, for emergencies, for things like that. The water fund I talked about on the 19th, that is an area that the LDC and Mr. Falwell is chair in State Treasurer have a great interest in on enterprise funds, and I'll talk about two of ours here right now. The water funds, were small but mighty, I guess. We have about 350 customers. As we've talked about, we have a tremendous amount of growth happening. So over five years, there's no doubt in my mind that we could double the size of our system, if not more than that. So part of our issue whenever we have a debt payment like we did, that was paid off last year, a major line break or something, that affects our small fund much more than with the city of Marion with over 3,000 customers. So we paid off a debt payment last year in the middle of the year, and so that's gone, that negative impact to our fund balance, our fund goes away. And so again, as we continue to grow our customer base, things will continue to do well there. So we've explained that in your attached letter, and so we don't anticipate any further action there. The waste fund, it was not highlighted in the letter this year, it has been highlighted in prior years. It could be highlighted this year. It just really depends on the mood of the staff at the LDC, because they see our entire honor, of course, and they can pick out anything they would like to question. And it is not a secret, Mr. Abernathy and I, over the past 25 years, if not longer, every year we present the, presented the budget, and I have, we highlight that we transfer a little over $1 million from the general fund into the waste fund every year. That's something that boards have been comfortable living with for a very long time. And so, but as enterprise fund typically, revenues support the fund, other than the general fund dollars, tax dollars. Well, a lot of most, I'll say most counties in our population range especially do, is they do what's called a household user fee. Those aren't necessarily popular, people call them trash packs and different things. And so it's usually assessed on the tax bill, and we've talked about that in prior meetings over time. If you did that fee, it would essentially offset the transfer that we're doing in the general fund now. It's very disruptive if you do that fee. Whenever you do something new, it's always controversial. But I mean, kind of at the cutoff point, if you would like to do one for July, really need to know now, if you'd like to consider it for a future year, you can just put it off for another day.
Let's put a board on that.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not really entertaining the fee of that to every property owner down there. That's where I'm at.
That's exactly where I'm at.
I do think we need to get some other options that we discussed in the past, and we can look at that possibly in our budget, but I'm less than the rest of the board, I'm not ready to do a trash fee. I do have a question about the fund balance. Yes, I do think we've made some great progress, 15%. Few years ago, up to 20, almost 25.5%. What is the recommendation that county or service to be, or what does the state recommend of us be at?
Our population range, the average is around 30%.
Okay.
So that will be probably a good target.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, good deal. Let's move on to new business to administrative items, this is the action items, so we'll...
Yes, sir. The two we added there at the beginning that I mentioned, again, at the request of the chair, vice chair, and maybe all five of you have received phone calls about the closing of the Truist branch in Old Ford. Both of you had asked about sending a letter to the leadership of the bank, and so if you would like to do so in direct staff to draft them.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion we have staff draft a letter to Truist Bank, encouraging the state, being able to, they've been there for many, many years, and they will not have a bank, they have two credentias located there, but business owners have discussed the fact that they need a bank there that could service them, and so I make that motion.
So, motion second, you have discussion. On favor, say aye.
Thank you. The other item, before I get the EMS write-offs, we've had mentioned before to, over time, various levels of interest in what I still call the pilot plant, which was a small animal processing facility near the Ag Bar in south of Marion. We've had some interest over time in actually purchasing the building from the county, and so what we don't know is really the true value of it. We know what was put in about 10 or 15 years ago, but really not what it's worth now, even as an asking price. So we'd like to ask that you authorize an appraisal of the facility and the grounds around it.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion we have staff that... Get an appraisal then see what the building's worth.
Sir. I agree with that, and I'd like to add one other thing to that, and, you know, I wouldn't even be willing to put this in a motion as well today, but I think that the money that, when we sell that, the money that we receive off of that should be directed toward animal shelter or a new animal shelter or repairs needed on the existing one, whatever is needed there.
Yeah, and I would...
I'd like to see that amended.
I'll go ahead and amend my motion, and I will discuss that real quick first, because I think it's very important today, we've got two competing interests for that particular pilot plant now, and we've got two local farmers that, me and the chairman went with, that are very nice people, that have expressed a desire, and they do have a letter guarantee that can be provided for the amount they offer. And also the need to expand their current animal shelter is there, and so I'll just say this as far as one commissioner, that I think that we do have land beside the riding stadiums, whatever you want to call that, down there, and at one time the board did go ahead and deed a section of that land and campions down there to a private animal group so they could build a building down there, but they weren't able to do that, so there was a reversal clause where that field, the land came back to the county. So I do, I do want to look at the possibility of a new building down there at some point, just to see what that would cost and that kind of thing.
Since that's one of the commissioners' opinion, my opinion, I do believe that there is needs for animal shelter, but as I've said in the past, I am going to be, we have kids in this county that have issues over holidays and over the summertime of eating, and I'm going to support kids above animals, and I think we need to look at either prioritizing, looking at all other options before we make decisions, and it would be my decision for that money to go into, if we do decide to sell the building, to go into the general fund at this time until we have better knowledge of what we can do for the kids over the animals.
I would agree with that.
I'll second the motion with the amendment made by Commissioner.
Yeah. As I say, my motion stands with the amendment, as a chairman of the West.
Okay.
Because we're not funded to be able to give them that, just sort of doing what you're doing, Patrick, what you want to do, sort of park it there.
My motion is specific. I want to park the money in the general fund. I don't want to, I don't want to label it for animal, I don't want to do that.
My motion... My motion was, my intent was to label it for the building of the animal shelter.
And I'm against it, and that's okay.
Okay. All right, so we've got the motion. Was that part of your motion, so?
Yeah, I'm in my motion to include my kids.
And I'll second.
We've got a motion and a second. Do you have discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, it's a three, two vote.
The last item there is the EMS write-offs.
Mr. Chairman, may I commission me approve the EMS write-offs as presented?
Second. Motion and a second. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both. Okay. Next is, again, is NC board appointments, Matt Clark.
Yes, sir. First and foremost, I do want to announce that the Historic Preservation Commission is accepting applications for prospective members. Candidates need to have a demonstrated special interest, experience, or knowledge in history, architecture, or related disciplines. They can send the applications to me. It's on the county website, or they can just come by the office. This is the second reading for the Agriculture Advisory Board attached to your agenda packet. You had two applications. One was for the Ag Board, which was Bob Brackett, and I just need to know if you guys want to approve him, just our.
Well, I just make a motion, there's an voucher, correct?
No, I'm not.
I'll make a motion that we approve Bob Brackett to serve on the Agriculture Advisory Board.
Second. Motion and second. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both. Okay.
And this is also the second reading for the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. Sarah Brewer is allowed to serve on the board.
May I commission me approve Sarah Brewer to serve on the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council board?
Second. Motion second. Do you have discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both. Okay.
Okay. And I've got just two more. Commissioner Green has decided to not serve on the Phil's Rural Planning Organization Committee, therefore, I need another commissioner to be appointed. Does anybody?
When does it meet?
I do not have that in front of me.
They meet tomorrow, so they meet quarterly, from my understanding. So it's usually around 1:00 on the Tuesday after this meeting. And it's in Rutherford County, so it's not necessarily convenient.
Right back, right back into the mask. Well, I honestly get all the meat and tongue and have, you know, I get that on regular.
Do you guys need to know why I won't do that?
Yes.
I don't care to tell you. I got an email that any local official, related official serving on that board has to do a personal financial statement and a real estate disclosure statement. My personal feeling is that's government overreach. If they had a problem years ago with somebody that did something unethical, they need to deal with them. I've not done anything, got nothing to hide, but I believe that's government overreach, and I will not be serving on that board.
Is that correct, Mr. Wood? Can you clarify that?
They do require disclosure of real estate owned by that member, if they serve.
And Commissioner Malone also confirmed that before the meeting.
And you are a non-voting member, so if you're a non-voting member on the.
It is a, sorry to correct, it is a voting member on the TAC. Staff serves on the Technical Coordinating Committee. We're not allowed to serve on the TAC. That's only.
Is this mandated by the state in any way?
It is mandated to be elected. If you're not on the board, as far as the county, we have no representation on voting on transportation projects in our county.
Now, the city council is represented too in that board, right?
Yes, Mr. Ayers.
With Woody Ayers. Well, I will concur with Commissioner Green. I think that it's a bit of an overreach, and I think we ought to, I'll make a motion, we petition our House member and our Senate member in Raleigh to see if they can get rid of that.
Yeah, I'll say, I'll say that they have any right to ask for that kind of information from.
They don't do it to county commissioners.
Every state-appointed office, whether it's just for point of fact, if you're on a state-appointed board, like the Board of Trustees, if you're, I missed any point there. Or any other state board, it is required.
My understanding is that they had a problem at one time with a member.
But you were saying that they wanted your financial statement from you as well.
And real estate.
But you didn't say anything about the financial.
Oh, that's in there, yes, sir. It's a 14-page disclosure. It's pretty flimsy.
They had a problem with somebody buying property, trying to get hold of, get ahead of a project, upcoming project, and then selling the property back. I've got nothing to say on nothing I've got, so they can forget it.
I concur with the motion. I do think we need to let our representatives know that we feel, and we'll vote on it, that it's a, you know, that we feel that this, it's not needed for this group.
Yeah, I think it's an infringement of our personal matters.
It's about as unconstitutional as it gets.
Yeah.
So you made a motion to this?
And I'll second.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. And there's also, I just wanted to let you guys know. I know that we've been talking about setting up a meeting with the town of Old Ford on a monthly basis, and they've communicated to us that they are ready whenever you guys are. That typically has two city members from the commissioners that would meet with them once a month. And they voiced to us that Fridays are pretty much their only day that they would be able to. So just, I don't know, this just wants to be like a chair and vice chair meeting, or how you wanted to do that, Commissioner.
What time will rise?
They did not set a time, so it's up to us.
Well, yeah, I'm good with whatever. I feel like certainly whoever the chair is, the chair needs to be at that meeting.
I admit it, I say the chair for certain, because they're dealing with a town, and the mayor I'm sure will be there. I know with the city, when we meet with them, the mayor's there and two council members. And it might be, I'm, as vice chairman, I may have to be there as long as whoever the chairman of the board is needs to be there, for sure, for certain.
It would be an awful lot of a problem if it's, you know, within the timeframe that I can work my schedule. It would be good if I could serve on that.
And, you know, if, I don't know why, if the city does, the mayor and two council members, if the chairman and two labor board members.
You've got a forum.
How do I get around that then?
He's not a voting member.
Got you. Explains the case. I'm good with, I'm good with people being on there and the chair.
Okay. And, you know, it could be something that, the idea, if you guys want to entertain that, I don't know how Patrick Schwartz's case is going to work, but, you know, we could alternate.
Rotate.
Always have a chairman of the board there and then rotate the other commissioners.
That's fine, I'll make.
If, that would be. Okay. Second.
Do you have Patrick? Do we need to vote on that?
Probably.
Make a motion that the chairman, whoever the chairman is, and at this stage, Patrick Ellis represent the county in discussions with the city once a month, and bring the motion back to the board.
Second. Motion second. Do you have discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both. Okay. All right. And that's all, isn't it, Matt Clark? Next, I'll be as tax matters, Mr. Wood.
We had a few tax items sent over by the Tax Department. These will be the typical releases, rebills, and refunds.
Mr. Chairman, may I commission me approve the releases and reveals as presented?
Second. Motion second. Do you have discussion? All in favor, that's aye. Any opposed? Okay. Next is Assistant Economist, Matt Clark. Do we have anyone that has signed up for this?
Yes.
That was all, so we had one more?
There we go.
Okay. All right, then. Next is Mr. Staff. Report, anything? Mr. Staff.
Just report that we will be closed next Monday for, Dr. King Holliday said the meeting that would be scheduled for next Monday will be moved to the 23rd.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
adjourn.